All right, good evening. And let's kick off this meeting of the Board of Education at seven oh five. Would all please rise.
I'm glad we're leaving.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. Dr. Willett, I believe we have some acknowledgements.
Indeed, so the artwork around the room was provided by a lot of high school students this time. So I'd like to acknowledge them into the record and, you know, anybody obviously summertime, probably not around the area, but but just to acknowledge them and make sure you know who's providing this great stuff. So going around the room, Whitney Singer, Sky, Perdino, Isabella Bagnol, Andrew Singer, and Anna Klenowski, Maura Klenowski, Isabella Charbonneau, Aliyah Summers, Gino Duccelli, Elizabeth Foy, Marleth Zudowski, Anna Marie Pope, Bridget, Bridget, Mia and Meyer, and Erica Miller. Am I forgetting anyone? Anyone perhaps that I'm forgetting? I think Ryan Galichant too, I think Ryan Galichant is one of our awesome artists. So anyway, congratulations to all of you for for having such great skills and and thank you so much for allowing us to use your artwork to to make our board chambers more interesting.
Thank you. Additions to the agenda, I'd like to make one change, I'd like to move the executive session to after points of information. That way Lisa can Lisa can go and the people online do not have to.
Are you saying public participation also moves up?
Yes, I had put it directly.
You said point, okay, I got, I'm sorry. Can we do that forever? You know, like never, but if we have an executive session, can we just make it so that, you know, public participation will be before? I mean, it just seems like it's silly.
It it depends sometimes on on why you have the executive session, so you certainly should do whatever you feel like you want, but sometimes.
Let's lean that way and we'll make that the norm. If we have to pull it up, then we'll pull it up.
Nice question, please. What would be a reason why we wouldn't want it?
Well, so let's say there's something that's in the press that the board is addressing in an executive session and there's been news coverage on it, people are aware generally that the board is taking this thing up and you have a conversation about it and then afterwards people want to hear about how you voted and want to comment on it. You know, they may want to comment on how you, you know, how you voted. So it depends.
And votes in executive session will be.
The votes are not in the executive.
They're in the public session.
We have to come out.
So like they might say, you're trying to prevent us from, you know, like different people.
You can always have another one after, didn't this, if no one's there.
So you have the discussion and then you vote and you have the discussion in the executive session and then you come out and vote.
And sometimes people will comment on how you voted or whatever, but but you can do, you know, every which way you want to.
But well. Sorry.
I feel like as a general the thing, you know, you don't want to make the public wait to speak for, it could be kind of a long time.
So we'll we'll make the norm that way and then we can look at it. Just to clarify, we're talking the end of the meeting, not the beginning of.
Yeah, not in.
There's two.
Right, right.
This is two points.
Correct, just leave this up.
Two executive sessions.
So this will have to wait to talk, I think that's.
All right. So moving on, I'll entertain a motion for approval that July twenty fourth minutes. So.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none. Jay, I, Reenie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dan?
Abstain.
Jen?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes. All right, public participation. The members of the Town and Board of Education welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting session. If you are online and would like to speak, please raise your your Zoom hand, people in the room. Raise your hand or step up and they will pick you up. As always, please start with your name and address for the minutes. Okay, hearing none. We'll close public participation. Correspondents, nothing to report. Points of information, would any of members of the board like to speak? Reenie?
I would just like to ask if we're gonna talk about the cell phones in the classrooms at some point soon, since it's been in the news a lot and like not, you know, maybe I'm not sure it's a vanity thing, but it's shutting them off, whatever it's gonna be, and how we might address that, is it?
Really?
Yeah, okay.
The others? All right, seeing none, thank you all. Committee and Liaison Report. FFC?
Yeah, thanks, Tony. So FFC, we actually just held it five thirty to six thirty. So few updates there. Capital budget, the draft so far was voted to move forward to the Board of Ed for consideration, so that's gonna be coming. The June end of year budget, we saw a nice bump, which we're gonna discuss probably in this meeting. It was about twenty thousand, I want to say, end of May. It went up to about seventy-six thousand primarily from special education reimbursement, as well as about twenty thousand dollars or so coming from transportation costs. That was from when we reduced the school year from one eighty-two to one eighty, so we saw a little bit of an increase there as well. The official request to move that surplus to the ERF is probably gonna be in Q three, no, no firm date yet. On that note, my last point, the ERF, FFC, we discussed the meeting taking place with the town council. I want to say it's later this month, the twenty-seventh potentially, at the town council level, just to talk about the ERF fund in general. So right now, I believe we have the ability to increase the one percent transfer to a two percent due to some, I guess, legislation changes and we could also look to expand the utilization beyond special ed, capital expenditures and technology, which we narrowed that scope back in twenty eighteen at the board level. It was FFC's recommendation and we agreed upon basically that we recommend to the Board of Ed and this team here that we ask our chair to basically request that we only do that increase to a total of two percent, not increasing everything to three, thank you, Reenie. So it's going to go from one to two percent that we're able to transfer to ERF. And then to kind of leave the utilization alone at this point and then just kind of take the first win and roll with it. But that's really it from my point, but if I mess anything up from our just conversation about half hour ago, let me know, Walt. So, thanks.
Okay. Kirk, you? We haven't met for this. Right, it's not on communication. And it is not on for policy. Negotiation?
None at this time.
Chair reporting. In a rare case of rare case, I don't have a report for this week, so I'll just say about three.
You always say that. Are you sure that's something you have to say?
Nothing critical at this point.
Part of humanity.
All right, Superintendent.
No chance of the same comment, huh? Starting now, Walt.
All right, so Superintendent's report tonight, we have some good news. Lexia, as you recall during the budget process, there was a cut made to Lexia and whenever there are any cuts made for things that are academic in nature, generally, I will always try to provide alternatives or find alternatives. I was able to get the academic and social support grant and so we are now going to be able to fund Lexia, that resource, the district and for the kids and they can use it in their homes in as a grant instead. So I just wanted to report out, you know, sometimes what will happen in the budget process is we cut something and then magic, you know, it reappears and people kind of want to know why and how that happened. In this case, we were able to get this back by making it part of the ASSG grant that I. So that's good news, we'll be able to have that resource back for the kids to spend.
It says that this is only for twenty-four, twenty-five. Would the anticipation be to try and fund it via grant for next other year or try and be able to put it back into the regular budget?
It could go either way, depending on, you know, again, depending on what our situation is coming up. You know, we, it may be that it goes back in and then the board can decide whether they want to take it out or not. I don't know how long I can keep it funded with the ASSG, but I'll try, I'll try.
Jen?
I just want to say thank you, Walt, for continuing to look for options to restore things we've lost. I would have loved to be able to use a grant to bring in something new, maybe some extra reading support for Birch Grove instead of something that we had to cut, but I'm very grateful that you were able to find something to bring something back. So thank you.
Just a curiosity question, I think this is for Dr. Willett. When when you've got programs like this, just in the mind of a teacher or administrator or anything, and you've got programs like this, yeah, curiosity, how do you? How do you plan for the next, I guess, school year? If you're unaware as to what programs you're gonna have available to you, because it, you know, even when I was looking at this earlier, it didn't pop into my mind until really just now, it seems like a conflict. I'm not saying this to create a conflict, I'm saying this genuinely, I'm curious. If I didn't know what teaching materials I was using the next year, it'd be hard to plan. So I'm just curious, what was the question?
Yeah, so when you're dealing with something like, it's a great question, when you're dealing with something like Lexia online, there are core programs that if they go away, cripples the system, you know. For instance, inter-reading is a required program in the state, costs us about seventy-eight thousand, actually eighty-four thousand. We got a grant, I got a grant for seventy-eight thousand of that. If that were cut, we would have a major problem. You know, Lexia was a resource that parent guardians and others could use that helped provide reading resources for kids at any reading level. So it's a useful classroom tool, useful tool that parent guardians can have at home, you know. But it wasn't something that would cripple the system without, it just would be one less resource for parents, one less resource in the classroom. You know, teachers would have to find other resources, that would be a little bit more time consuming. But it's not like it it cripples the phonics, you know, program. So something like this is good to have to augment and support students and their families, particularly those who don't have the same maybe income levels as some other parents. But it, you know, but without it, it's just something less that the parents have.
Other free.
Something less that the kids have in class too, they have to find a few more things.
I'm sure we scoured this already before and again, this is just out of curiosity, are there free alternatives to something like this or there's nothing that can compare?
No, they they wouldn't. I'm trying to answer the the best way I can. There's a lot of money put into research and development and making that product and, you know, putting the resources together. So there isn't a free version that is as good because that otherwise no one would buy that at all, you know, and more and more with the AI doing its aggregation of things, corporations are putting more and more information behind firewall and the AIs can't get to because they don't want things to, you know, that they're trying to sell to be readily available on the internet for free. So no, not really, not anymore. Back in the nineties, you know, early two thousands and maybe even twenty-tens, there was a lot of stuff like that, but now it's most of those companies, that's how they make their profit. So.
Thank you. Good question, wish. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Willett, K two.
It's a great ski mountain in the. Okay, K two is basically a reminder of the meeting that is coming up with the town council that I had mentioned before, there is a state delegation that will be attending. I still don't have official communication on exactly who, but I believe it's, you know, all of our representatives from this area. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss educational cost sharing, ECS funding, educational cost sharing is funding that goes to the town, it doesn't come to the board. It's for a town to offset its educational expenses as it sees fit. So that means that those funds can go in a variety of places. And so that conversation is gonna be around that funding that comes into the town. It's not excess cost, which is different, that would be something that is special ed reimbursement based. So educational cost sharing, in the last few years, there's been a number of proposals at the state level for reducing Tallon's amount of money that it gets for that. And that has obviously created consternation and so that will likely be part of that conversation as well. We have not been hit as hard as we could have been, some of those plans had been followed. Like I think Public Act nineteen-two and there's a few others that we're gonna have a ten and twenty-year, you know, de-escalation of what we were given, but those have been somewhat put on hold and the legislature's been more gracious to Talon. But it's still a major concern and you're still getting less than you used to get. So that's probably gonna be part of the conversation that night. It's a worthwhile, you know, worthwhile thing to attend. It will be very informative, I think, and you'll have an opportunity, well, at least to hear, I don't know. I don't know what opportunity they will give for interaction, but I'd imagine there would be something, so I'm not sure of the, you know, that specific.
I'm gonna note out to Katie and Jacob.
I did look for the agenda and I don't know that they had published that yet, so. But I want to keep it on your radar because it may be of something of interest to you.
Comments, questions? Dr. Willett, L one.
All right, so as you know, at the beginning of every month, we have a monthly financial report. This is the, literally the first one of the fiscal year. So you'll notice that that we have a four percent of our budget right now that is unexpended, which is pretty typical for the very first month, about one, you know, one point seven million. Not a whole lot has been expended, so you'll notice that if you open the CTELL sheet, that most of our funds, they're gonna be at there. There's gonna be encumbrances as you'd expect, but not a lot has been spent yet out of any of those lines, so there's not a tremendous amount to report. As we go along, you know, there'll be, there'll be fluctuations and things to speak of, but right now it's pretty much that we've encumbered some items where where we expect to be and we're just starting out the year.
Dan, did FFC have any concerns or exciting points?
No real concerns there, just what we had noted. Rollover request is gonna be Q three, so and then obviously the discussion around just the actual increase from back in May, that was primarily the the transport and special ed reimbursement that wasn't utilized, so nothing else beyond that.
Wasn't this different? This was, that's not what we were looking at.
Right, and FFC, you're looking at the end of your balance.
Oh, I see those.
Yeah, yeah.
This is next.
Yeah, it's the very first month of your new fiscal year, but there's not a lot to talk about. You'll probably end up.
I didn't see it on the screen, I see it now, thanks.
All right, which of these items had you nervous, all right?
I I don't get nervous, I I just consider all options, think about all things here, make sure that we end at the most practical place for the town talk. I would say, you know, I think we're doing much better on staffing, no teachers situation. I picked up a lot of teachers from Enfield, unfortunately. So we're in a pretty good place.
Thank you.
So I think it'll be a very positive.
No, no concerns for the stuff that's already negative?
Well, no, there's encumbrances, but I think that'll, you'll see some things that go back and forth over the span of time and some things get released over time. So at the beginning of the year, I usually don't, I don't have many concerns as we start. You know, I think the big concern always is special education because we don't get, you know, those we don't get that money right away, we have to plan carefully, stipends, that'll always be a little negative because you haven't collected all the money. It's the sports, we collect quite a bit of money in our pay-to-play, so you'll see that. That stipends will crawl back up as soon as we start collecting funds for pay-to-play and things like that. Pretty typical, I would say.
Any other comments, questions? Dr. Willett, L two, Board of Education meeting dates. We want lots.
I just bounced myself out of.
Thought she had two things on that. Did you? Yeah, for the meeting dates.
No, no, we didn't.
All right, here we go, Board of Ed meeting dates. So each year, we present Board of Education dates for consideration and these are those dates for the coming coming calendar year. We do have a deadline for these, but but it's not right away, so you have some time that you want it. And these are pretty much what you're seeing every and I won't blabber on about it, it's pretty, pretty much what you're seeing every year, so you can make adjustments as you see fit.
Second and fourth, right?
Generally the second and fourth, although some months it gets adjusted because there's like December, that holiday, pushed up to the third probably.
Right, you said you had two things.
Yeah, so I was like, looked over this yesterday or, yeah, you guess. After my drive is all wired for the other room. So after the October twenty-second date, there's a three-week gap until the one on November twelfth and then we have one on the nineteenth. Would it be more sensible to move the November to the fifth and nineteenth and then the same thing with the December? There was a big gap from November nineteenth all the way until December tenth, can we do the third and the seventeenth? So you don't have them back-to-back weeks, you still have like a two-week gap. Because especially during the school year, the hesitation is that we don't meet for three weeks sometimes. You know, things can kind of come up that you'd probably rather not have a three-week gap than be having one week, one week and then not have stuff for three months. That was just my thought, I don't know.
We should do whatever you want to try to do. I think what we would do is make recommendations for changes and we'll run the bases. Because sometimes the meetings are selected because other meetings are are close to horse taking those spaces. So I think traditionally the board's done the second and fourth because some other boards and commissions have the first and third and things like that.
Just take a look at those two days, it makes sense.
Yeah, so off the top of my head, I don't know, but we can make any change, we can research any change you want.
So that'll be moving to November twelfth to November fifth, if you take the notes, and then the December will be moving the tenth to the third. Will be the proposed. Opposite, but I was off the top of my head.
You made it just in time.
I was gonna, you know, go there, like, we got it.
I was wondering on the
The year plus or now?
Why is or it's usually canceled, is there a reason we can't just take it off?
But classically, we've left it on.
Special meeting, we need something.
We can. Classically, we've left it on and canceled as we got closer, but as to your point, we could do the opposite as well.
Tommy always likes to vote, yes.
I I like to be, enjoy all of your smiling faces. In virtual.
Tony, I don't think you're gonna win if you vote against.
I think I lose it every time.
I was just, it was just a suggestion, like, if if there's something happening, you know, we've had it, there's already, you know, and and just.
Sorry, I think keeping it on there for now, because I think if we have a, if we have a special meeting, right, with no public participation, something along those lines, that no, we can put two. Gotcha.
You just have to have a specific agenda.
It's specific agenda, I got you, okay. If it was for that reason, if we had to cut out public participation or we had to cut out, you know, any of any of the public part of it, then I'd say probably I'd be favoring this whole lot, but if it doesn't, then I. Anyone else? Take it on.
Take off joy.
Exactly. Do we need to vote for that?
We have to vote on the whole.
You do have to, you have to vote on the whole.
Okay, so. Like, wow, just with a swipe of the, you know.
My.
The power.
So we will adjust this and then bring it back to you.
So to be clear, that's the November twelfth to the fifth, December tenth to the third, and then eliminating July nine.
Yeah, and if there's any conflicts, I'll inform you of the conflicts.
Any other comments? Ready, good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Dr. Willett, item L three, ERF utilization.
Okay, so this this was a little bit discussed in FFC today, just to give you some modified numbers because this was published prior to the FFC meeting, so it's not really modified numbers, but just so we're clear that the the, if we do transfer funds at the end of the year, I think we're at two nineteen in the, sorry, in the third quarter, so you have about seventy-six thousand that has, like Mr. Sheridan was saying, that we can request in the third quarter to move over to the ERF. So your one forty-three, three eighty-four, we would be plus that seventy-six, you're like two nineteen. That would be in that ERF fund as of the third quarter of this year. But this is a wrap-up of what you utilized for the budget process. So this particular item is just to report out to you with the total that about one eighty-six for for what has been utilized for your ERF in this particular budget process. And then, as you know, you do have the August twenty-seventh meeting, there's some information on the dashboard about that meeting, you know, some links, and the FFC took up the item for ERF and that's available to any board member under the FFC folder. So you can, you know, look at everything that was discussed with respect to the ERF overall. But this is an update, just to give you a status of where we are.
So where's the, so what's the, I, I'm not saying this error, just the after the total utilization amount, what is the balance then?
One forty.
Proposed balance?
One forty-three, three eighty-four.
Okay.
As of the third quarter, yeah, you'll you'll get that up to about two-nineteens, which will have left after the third fiscal quarter. And the reason why we can't transfer it prior to the third quarter is that the auditors have to review it and say, yes, there is indeed seventy-six thousand, you know. Leftover from three, four, thirty, twenty.
Historically, what do we have in the ERF?
Well, it's, it has fluctuated a lot, twenty eighteen through twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, you had a lot more in there because of COVID and money that was transferred.
Number ballpark.
It's fluctuated anywhere between a hundred-something to seven-hundred-something, you know. There was one year where I think there was a consideration of one point two million, but that was never in the ERF, that was just some, you know, money that was available at the end of a year of COVID, I think. I have to go back and look at, I can. I have to go back and look at, I can, if you give me maybe three minutes, I can pull that up. But usually E R F is anywhere from a hundred to a couple hundred thousand.
So even with using a hundred and eighty six thousand that we've used this year for for the, for this budget. And you know, after Q three, it going up to two nineteen, it's a little less than what we had in there. Hundred thousand dollars less than what we had in there in March, but it's still within the normal range of what we typically did.
Yeah, what you're transferring over represents point one eight percent of your budget.
Sure.
And so generally, you you have, yeah, and you, when one of the conversations about E R F is you're allowed to transfer over one. Percent of your budget, and the new state law, I think as of twenty twenty says you could actually put two percent. And that's part of the conversation that you may want to have, so, uh, but you don't usually have anywhere near that left. Generally, you don't.
Oh, we shouldn't.
I do apologize, I do want to circle by, I just wanna, I know I wasn't here, I do apologize, the the Selexia online, the twelve thousand dollar grant. Wasn't that, that was initially supposed to, a portion of that was going to be taken from the. E R F, I believe, um, during the last budget, was uh, meeting that we had, is that correct or incorrect, there's nobody recall?
I thought the, I thought this portion of Alexia was almost totally removed. This, this, this portion, this Lexia that that got added back in, that was gonna be totally removed out of the budget. We weren't paying a portion of it out.
What do you mean? I thought a portion of that got put back in, in the last budget when we started talking about.
There was Lexi, there's. I think there's Lexia online and Lex, there's a lot of Lexia. And so Lexia online is the portion that parent guardians could use for diversification of materials, there's more, more that.
She's talking, right, in the last round of reductions?
Yes, in the last discussion, we were more or less slicing and dicing, making deals with the E R F utilization. Was a big thing, I remember this Lexia, whatever portion of it was, some monies, like, I believe, like I said, I can go back to the minutes, but I, I can't do that right now.
Can you pull up that production?
I think I can, either on the website, just kind of look.
And I did miss, was this grant that was granted to us, was this something in the wings that we? Were not really aware of, just came out, we got, we submitted this application for the grant, and the money just became available, or? How did that come to be?
This is a grant that um, that I file for each year and generally get, and then I was gonna allocate twelve to that. To cover it, so it doesn't have to be covered enough. Because it fits as one of the categories of that.
But wasn't that on the chopping block though?
Well, that's what you're asking, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go look at what, to see if I get, provides verification.
Service circle back. Nice, nice uh tag in.
I do remember having that conversation. About Lexia, and because I said, okay, parents just get it, and if it's successful for them, then maybe they just have to pay for it themselves, and then it was like, oh, no, that's not a good thing.
Because it was, one was that helping, and it was also the summer program, where I remember Dana was like, oh, hey, we should tie that back in, help students that were. You know, so it's, you have to be so far behind, or.
Right, right.
Continued on the summer was kind of a couple programs to help children, you know, not outside of the school itself. You know, that were on the chopping block, and I think we were able to kind of talk them back in, was my, is my thought right now.
I remember the clarification.
It may have been like, put that back in, but then we're gonna offshore a little bit more of special ed. To use the E R F, I I'm not really sure, you know what I mean, I, you know, maybe.
Yeah, on the board dashboard, there is the, there is a posting for what the after referendum final. You know, final was, looking back to see. E R F utilization thirty five, educator, one percent increase, tech. Transportation, induction, legal fees. Um, NearPod software. Uh, Vime, it's Vime Media software, um. So NearPod software was still cut. That's the piece that, that um, we, we have some funding for this, we can then probably just push it over to NearPod. But I was able to get funding for this.
Okay, so.
So I had, I'd have to go back to the minutes to get.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to.
From six twelve, you, you did cut um, NearPod software, so.
No, I just thought that that was being, what I'm, my, my thing was, for some reason, I have in my mind that this Lexia.
Yeah.
That's here that you got this grant for, for twelve thousand. I, for some reason, have that in my mind that we're using twelve thousand from the E R F utilization monies. To pay for that, but we're getting this twelve thousand dollar grant, my thought is then. We should have some monies going back from that line item back into the E R F.
You would, I mean, I.
I feel like we just have kept it overall, we just said we're gonna keep that, so I, I don't.
Yeah.
Again, I get to go back to, but I do remember a fair bit, a little bit of discussion.
The reduction to get to three point nine one percent, um, which was the. May seventh referendum, that had Lexia, one of the Lexia products removed. So I'd have to look for the minutes to see what was restored, but that, you know, that was removed in the May seventh version of this. Along the way, um, and so, you know, I'd have to go back and look, but the bottom line is I did get it in a grant, so. We either can replace it, or you can get twelve thousand dollars towards something else here, to offset a bunch of. I was able to get that at the A S S chief.
So can you take an action?
I'll go dig it out of.
Let's put clarification up on the dashboard.
Yeah, no, the only, you know, just some, also, I'm just, thank you for that, the only, I'm also thinking, going ahead into next year. Specifically for the utilization of. Aiding funding in the E R F, for possible this uh, four hundred K plus technology.
Yeah.
Computers and all that, so, I mean, you know.
I mean.
Every few thousand here or there, well, that one helps, so I'm just, you know, we can salvage twelve grand to. Possibly utilize it for that next year then.
We can absolutely.
Like you said.
If we don't need to use it here, then.
Put that, yeah, for sure. Okay, sorry, everybody.
Uh, any other comments or questions on this?
Tony.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jen.
I was just, I, you guys just dropped it, but I did see on the dashboard that, so I don't know if that's, I, I just might make it even more confusing, but. Um, for the, before the meeting, the, our last meeting, so for six ten, that was posted for the, to the dashboard. There was Alexia online service, E L A, for twenty five thousand dollars on there, this was the suggestions.
Yeah, I think, I think the thing is, there's a lot of Lexia products. So we had added, there was a reduction where Lexia online went away, you put back the Lexia in its full, there was a. A reduction of Lexia in its fuller form, that was the one that was left in. But the one that got cut was the online one back in May seventh. So who is, there, there are many products in the Lexia series, so Lexia is not just twelve thousand. Um, you put back a portion of Lexia that was going to be cut in the fourth referendum.
Alright, thank you.
You good, Jen?
Yep.
Right, so it looks like there's a recommended. You're taking a motion to move this to board action? Where we move it?
Accepting this?
We don't actually have to move it.
Yeah, um. You know. You know, it would actually, if you want to do this, it'll codify it in case I run into any issues. That this is your approval, you already approved these throughout the budget process, but we never approved them in one.
Is it this action for the?
This, this would, this would be, because I don't want to just rely on what we have in the minutes, this would be a codification of that amount. So that that amount can then be transferred into the uh four or five budget from the E R F. In case we're asked.
Line item, it's big number.
Yeah, that, that, we talked about all these ones all the way through, but this is the final total, and instead of relying on all those separate minutes. We can just hand over this if there's any problem.
I would just, I'm, I'm good with that, but I would like to see what is the detail that came up with these numbers, the thirty, the forty nine, 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 seven. Like what was included in those that we then said yes to that, because I, it's clear we don't kind of make you remember.
Well, it's, if you look on the dashboard, the whole, all of it from the first referendum, all the way through the last referendum is there.
Does it make sense to put it all on one document here?
Yeah, especially for public.
You know, referendum one, thirty thousand, and it's these three items, or it's eight, or whatever, it would make it easier for us to be like, okay, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, it was just a chunk of your offset, um, so. On the dashboard itself, let me see if I can.
I mean, the only. If, uh, you know, the fifty thousand, it gives us, it's server equipment offset. You know, what does the thirty thousand represent, what is the forty nine thousand?
Some of it's not, that was specifically for server equipment, but the, some of these other ones were, you were taking a chunk of. E R F to avoid cutting more things, it didn't actually represent. Like a server, it represented a chunk out of your overall budget reduction.
The overall cut then.
Yeah, we had to cut less things because you took thirty from that, that's why, and it's all, it is there on the dashboard, um, and um.
So it's not like that thirty thousand is bringing back. Lexia, I mean, for.
Right, it was to prevent you from having to take more things, you were able to, and the, uh, the conversation around that was always, well, we're kicking the can. Because that could, you know, they have to come up with it, um, but again, that.
I was gonna say, I under- I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but I, I think the bet- the better thing for. Town transparency and our own transparency references document. Even if we just say, oh, thirty thousand went to the town council cuts versus say fifty thousand went to this X Y Z server. I think would be better.
Well, they have that, I think they have it, um, let me just show you what's up there right now. And 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 for certain, you know.
If I'm sitting at home and, um, you know.
So what you're looking at is.
Dad of a fourth grader, look, and I want to go find it at home, where do I go?
Here, on the budget side. These were the budget uh changes to adjust to the town council reductions for the eighteenth referendum, and I'll put the after referendum one as well, but this has.
No, like, where do I go to go see the details, like you said, the fifty thousand was for the. The server.
I feel like some of them were tied to certain things, I mean, the server was clear, but I thought there was like the iPad. Replacement was something, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, there was the Promethean board that I had, well, and one of the first ones, yes.
Like there were some specific items that went with some of it.
Yeah.
And again, maybe it's a research project, but.
I mean, I think, whatever you want to do, I mean, what I'm trying to do is get it to the, this is merely a formality. So that you can have the hundred and eighty six thousand four transferred into the four or five budget.
Right.
And there is a document up here that kind of goes from referendum to referendum as to what happened. Um, and.
So that says it right there, if you scroll back down, you know, that's forty nine, 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 seven. You know, it, it gives the description, requests will be made to offset the special education, can't believe I said, I need a bigger TV over there.
Yeah, and one of the places you can use the R F, the category would be special at offset. So it's, it's not like. Necessarily computer server, because when we do the computer servers, we've actually come to you, and that was an agenda item. Back before the budget process even started, it's just that we wrapped it in here, um. But this should give exactly what you're looking for with respect to every, it's organized by referendum. So, you know, prior determinations to May seventh were these things. Um, if you go back from the bottom all the way up, it talks about, you know, total reduction to get to three nine one. And then it talks about the. Uh, budget figures for the May twenty first referendum, then it talks about the budget figures from the June fourth referendum, then it talks about the budget figures for the last referendum. It illustrates those reductions along the way, so the purpose of this agenda item is, is just to get your money. Yeah, and and the information, you know, that leads up to it is, is, is on your budget site right now.
Brian, is that good for your forty four year old father?
For whatever age I. Yes.
Thank you.
Can you let Dana?
No, I, I just like I said, I, and and I like to move that, you know, going forward, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but I, I, I do have. People. From this last budget, it's maybe for a better points of information, but I, I, I know some transparency with some of the gripes with some people in town.
Yeah, let's bring that up in. Just to be, alright, so we're looking to do there, I just want to make sure. Uh, he's got some comments for which we should. So, seeing that, um, are we ready to vote to approve?
Should we move it or to?
We can just the motion, we can read the motion off, because it would literally go to the next thing. Then you want to let, oh, sorry.
So in the minutes of the uh.
Tony.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you there, Jen.
That's right, I just, I, Walt wasn't sharing his screen while he was doing it, so I just want to make sure, Walt, did you pull it up from the Talon Board of Education website itself? So, you know, in terms of people discussing transparency in the community. If you go to the Talon Board of Education, click on the budget tab, you can literally click on every single document, four sixteen, five fourteen, five twenty nine. Six twelve, every single reduction that we made. So, again, I think our transparency far outweighs any other department in the town. It's all online, it's just a matter of going to see it, when it comes to the external community members for us. If you go into the B O E dashboard and click updates and do a control F and hit and, and type the word budget. You'll see even more than that, because you'll see every suggestion list Walt gave, gives us before the meeting, and then every final one that was then uploaded. The exact file is on the Talon Board of Education public website, it's all there.
Yeah, you have these iterations all the way up, from, you know, April to May, to late May, to June. And then, uh, you know, that is the list of all the stuff from referendum to referendum. Um, you know, and I can put some other stuff up here too, but that, that's, that gives you a path all the way to where you landed.
Corey, could you add Dana?
Uh, I did, yeah, I.
Couldn't just close call. Alright, uh, thank you, Jen. Any other comments? The motion back up. entertain that motion, if the board so chooses. Motion to authorize the utilization of a hundred and eighty six thousand four hundred dollars of the educational reserve fund. Fifty thousand for I T server equipment, one hundred and thirty six thousand four hundred for special education for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty. Comments, concerned?
I am late, sorry, can you repeat the motion, please?
Get it louder, please. Motion to authorize the utilization of a hundred eighty six thousand four hundred dollars of the educational reserve fund. For uh fifty thousand for I T server equipment, one hundred and thirty six thousand four hundred for special education for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Second.
Thank you, I didn't hear the number, I'm sorry, guys.
Greg, you have a comment?
Yes, I do, just, this is, these are, this is from the minutes, I'll just read those, those states from this last meeting, uh, since February fifteen, twenty eighteen. Uh, scroll all the way to the top, June twelfth, so it just says here, um. Sorry, I lost my spot, do apologize, I want to take a waste time on this, that's kind of just bottom of mind, uh. Okay, it says, Mr. Thompson commented that he would like to keep the full E S Y program in Lexia, fifty five thousand total. As well as to cut two bus routes, hundred twenty thousand, offset remain in the E R F, Mr. Boat agreed. Ms. Philbin agreed with Mr. Thompson, Mr. Boat, decision is to be made, you know, wants to be cut, and it goes yada, 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 so it was at this. Last one on whatever, June, something that was discussed, and I think that's. So it was at this last one, on whatever, June, something that was discussed, and I think that's what we ended up having our final vote on that. Whatever this Lexi that was mentioned here was put back in. So is this, I don't know what the total from this E S Y program and whatever the cost was on that Lexi at this meeting. Is this the twelve thousand that you're utilizing or not?
Well, the Lexia is in the A S S G, so we are gonna get twelve thousand through, through A S S G for Lexia. So we can offset what we have. I still wanna look at that more deeply to see whether that was, you know.
Cuz my question, then it's, there are twelve thousand we put back into the E R F. You're getting a twelve thousand dollar grant, to offset this cut that we made.
It never came out of the E R F technically, cuz you haven't made that request yet, that money would go into your operating budget. That's, that, so if I get a grant for something during the year that we have in operating, you just end up having more money in operating for the end of the year. That you can roll into the era for the next, you know, for the next thing. So it's, it's a good thing for me to pursue no matter what, because, you know, generally I would do that anyway. So that if there's something that um, we can get out of a grant, you have more flexibility in your budget overall. It's, so it's a positive thing, it's just probably what ended up happening is I have to pursue these now before, you know, this stuff happens along the way. So uh, I'll put my, you know, money, or I'll try to put the grants in for the things I know that we need. That perhaps we can get an offset for, and that probably aligned at the same time we were doing the final budget process. So that's why Lexi is in there, you got Lexia because there was a chance of you losing Lexia. Um, but Lexi is not just twelve thousand.
No, I, I.
So I have to go back and look, cuz I'm still not convinced.
I did just want to clarify the point, though, that it was mentioned, was discussed, and it was part of this negotiation with the bus routes and all of that at the last.
But to clarify, again, just to add to it.
Yeah.
That might have been fifty five thousand cutting more of the Lexia program. Do you understand what I'm saying, that you cut May seventh, you cut the Lexia online. That might, that is a much bigger cut of Lexia, so the Lexia online, they still have been reduced when you put that fifty five, or I have to look at it back. That would have been for, as the process went on, we were cutting more and more. That might represent a part of the program that is uh, not the online piece.
So let's just, let's go.
So that's the June twelfth meeting.
I consider.
Right, but you'll notice that that's for fifty five.
But it says total for the two, whatever the two are.
Right, so fifty five is not, is not twelve.
Right, so let's go back in and just do the developments and do some research and post that.
All right, thank you, I just want to get what date they want, so June twelfth.
So we've got that date, we can look specific.
Thanks, Jen.
Other comments, questions? Concerns? Okay. Hearing none, Jayden. Reenie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have no old business. We just did our board action, moving on to public participation. There is nobody online in, nobody in the room. Points of information, Brian, did you have some?
Nah, I just, I wasn't trying to throw anybody into the class, right, I was, was just mentioning from the budget. Uh, session, uh, you know, the whole length of six months or. And then going on, that, you know, there was comments here and there about just what kinda, where, where can I find this, you know, this, that, and the other. Not that it's not there, I'm just was speaking, I think going into the next budget, I don't know how, like. Like Bill was saying, like, it's not on that agenda, like, you went to the agenda to see that one page document of the five different meetings. That we had, that we, or five different reductions from the E R F, it's not there, so you gotta go hunt it down, this, that, and the other, like. We're all sitting on the board, and some was don't even, you know, it takes, oh, I gotta click here, there, and everywhere to try to find it, I was just trying to see. How it could be a more maybe streamlined process, better viewing or something to where, when we come, whatever. Four month, five months, or four months, or the five months from now, or go through this again, that we're gonna have. It just hurts the heart, doesn't it? But then we're gonna have this, these budget questions, and then we're hiding stuff, and where is it, where can I, you know, get this information? Da, 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 moving forward for the general public in town, so people are so angry with us.
And, you know, just for, for my thoughts. A better way or, or discussing and trying to figure out a better way of communicating and providing these documents for the next budget cycle. Seems like a great thing to bring up again. Why don't the communication need to take, how we do that, that there's always one improvement, and they need to write some ways. And it's easier to get into, or easier to get out.
All right. Wow, we'll throw it on our agenda, yes, for sure.
Great. Suggestion for that might even be a monthly email, glass about the budget, every budget season. Maybe links or some communication, yeah.
The link that, sorry, that's a job.
No, 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 that document that Dr. Willett was just finding, that he had found on the twelfth, the document, putting that in some sort of blast out. Cuz some people can simply track it, you know, throughout the month, or hopefully it doesn't take, or referendum. Next time, and hopefully it's not so hard to track all of those next times.
They've got the whiplash.
I, you know, I do this in foremost, so.
All right, Jen, Dana, we got some work ahead of us.
Jen, I see your hand up.
Sorry, my dog started barking. Um, no, I was just going to say, Brian, if, if you sensed frustration, it wasn't at you at all, it's just about the, you know, this is my third budget season, and. We hear the same discussions about, you know, complaints about transparency, every budget cycle, it feels like, and every budget cycle, it feels like we put more and more information out. You know, people wanna see exactly what we looked at in the meeting, so we put out exactly what we looked at in the meetings, then they wanna see it a different way. And then if Walt does schedule an all hands, or, you know, a community forum, or puts out any kind of email. Then it, it's fun that he's trying to influence the budget process, so. It's just one of those things that I feel like no matter how much we give sometimes, like, there just always seems to be the same criticisms. Um, and I do truly believe that we try to be as transparent as we can, and I believe this board especially. Did everything we could this process to answer every question and give every opportunity for the community to engage, so that was. That was the only reason why I wanted to make sure I pointed out and that we had, um, cuz I couldn't see what Walt was pointing to when he was scrolling. So I just wanted to make sure it was from the public community page and how to get there and how to look at all the documents.
All right, thank you, yeah, we'll, we'll chat further, thank you.
All right, any other points of information? All right, moving on then, we'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
For general participation.
We did that.
We did.
There, there was no problem.
Missed that.
They all participated. All right, anyway, uh, for the purpose of superintendent evaluation and compensation.
So.
Any discussion?
We have to invite Dr. Willett in, inviting Dr. Willett into the session.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, Jayden. Reenie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
And I as well. Uh, Lisa, you are more than welcome to leave, we can take the front of the vote, the time down, and then pass it on to you. Uh, everybody online, we will take a couple of minutes break while Lisa passes up.
Recording stopped.
So, I will entertain a motion on the superintendent. Uh, motion to approve changes to the superintendent's twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five contract. As specified in August fourteenth, twenty twenty four Board of Education meeting with a one percent. General wage increase of one thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars eighty nine cents. According to five A, and extend the contractual agreement between the Board of Education and Superintendent Walter Willett for three years. From July first, twenty twenty four, into July thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, and update section three terms of agreement in the superintendent's contract according. Second.
Second.
Discussion?
I would like to separate the motions. So the. The wage increases separate.
Uh, so the motion that's on the table, second, and heads and votes, so I could vote that. Other discussion?
Tony, it looks like we lost Dana.
Oh, so she. Just called her.
Yeah, I just sent her a message, is she in a waiting room?
Lisa and Boston to record to their computer.
Oh, yeah, cuz she's back.
I'm trying to get on Zoom, but I won't make it back yet. Are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm trying to get back into Zoom, but I won't make it back yet.
All right, yeah. Yeah, give it a shot, do you have to hang up? All right, try one more time, then call back.
Hi, it's Lisa, just let me know when you'd like me to hit record.
Oh, should we ever read them?
We should have, yeah.
So are we gonna have to redo the motion? No, we've got it. We've already got to give this a vote, either. Lisa, you can hit record at any point.
Recording in progress.
I don't know.
Well, well, well.
That's part of discussion.
Dana, tell me you can hear us.
Yeah, sorry for the technical difficulties, I have a house of thirteen people.
Uh, okay, so we have.
No, geez, I'm nice.
Um, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, for brevity, we've got it written down, Lisa, we'll get that to you, the one percent increase and extending the evergreen clause. It was seconded. And we are in discussion. Reenie had her comment, which will add to the minutes, uh, as far as she would like it to be separated. Any other comments? I agree with Reenie to separate it.
I agree as well.
Any other comments? Hearing none, let's vote, Jayden.
What, what are we voting on, just so I play the.
One person on the floor, and the motion as it is, one percent and extending the evergreen.
Okay. So I thought they weren't separating them or no?
No, cuz the motion hasn't.
Okay.
Sorry, this motion failed, then another motion.
Uh, uh, I'm on the, thank you, thanks for the.
We?
Nick.
Bill?
Nick.
Dan?
Nick.
Jen?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Brian?
Nay.
Dana?
So to be clear, we're voting on the motion with one percent increase and the evergreen, but we had a comment of split again, so that's why we're voting ye or nay, right?
The ye or nay is on the motion with them together.
Okay, aye.
And I'm an I as well. So that's five, four. I will entertain a motion to dismiss. Motion to adjourn. Discussion. Jayden?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.